The August 20th meeting of Longview City Council is now called to order. Tonight's meeting is being conducted via teleconference. We'll begin with a roll call. District one?
Here.
District two?
Here.
District three? District three?
Here.
District four?
Here.
District five?
Here.
District six?
Here.
We'll have roll call the city staff, city manager?
I'm here.
This is city attorney?
Here.
City secretary?
Here.
Thank you. During that citizen comment, those who participate in citizen comments tonight, we're invited to access this meeting through the link to register with teleconference application. Shawn Herr, the city's media and tourism manager, will moderate citizen comment portion of meeting. When you're called to speak, you'll have, you'll be unmuted and given one opportunity to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Please begin by sending your name and address for the public record. Shawn, who do we have first?
As the mayor said, we have a large number of people who have registered to speak during the meeting tonight. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand using the go-to webinar tool. As much as feasible, we will go in order based on the time of original registration for the meeting. Before and after each speaker, I will announce who is up to speak, and I will also announce who is next in line to speak to help us through the process. Please be sure to unmute your own device when it is your turn. The first speaker tonight will be James Graham, and up next after that will be Rhonda Anderson. So we have James Graham first, and then Rhonda Anderson, you will be next. So, James, I will be unmuting your mic here in a moment. James, it's your turn. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is James R. Graham, Jr. My address is 249 East Greenville Street, Alba, Texas. I'd like to thank the members of the Longview City Council for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I would like to say that I oppose the removal of the Confederate monument on the courthouse lawn because it honors our ancestors who served their country in the Confederacy. I look around our great country today, and I see Berlin, Germany in 1940. They burned bibles and books, burned flags, confiscated guns, closed churches, got rid of public police, and tore down statues and monuments in the attempts to erase history. And guess what? It didn't work. History is still there, good, bad, or indifferent. I'm not here to argue our history. All of the things I mentioned were accomplished by a group known as the Brown Shirts. And where the only difference between them is being the color of their shirts is happening here today in our country. So with this in mind, please don't allow our country to repeat that history. Part of the events of the past three or four years, all we sons of Confederate veterans wanted was to be left alone and to be able to honor our ancestors. I myself am a proud member of the Sons of Confederate Veterans and a life member of the Military Order Stars and Bars, and my beautiful wife is a proud member of the United Dollars of the Confederacy. Thank you for your time. D.O.V.D.C.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Up next will be Rhonda Anderson, and following Rhonda will be Justin Saxon. Again, we're trying to go in order based on how you registered. So up next will be Rhonda Anderson and then Justin Saxon. Give me a moment, I'll unmute Rhonda. Rhonda, you should be okay to speak. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, council members. I'm calling in for discussion item number four as well about the Confederate monument. And I'm just calling to remind the city council that this is not a city council issue, and the fact that it's on our agenda this evening is the epitome of government overreach. The city council has no say in county issues, especially this issue. Why are we using city resources to discuss a county issue that has already been discussed? It's a waste of our time, and it demonstrates bad leadership when there are plenty of other issues that our city needs addressed, mostly like public safety and city finances. So I'd like to ask the council to redirect their time and energy and effort into sticking to city council and city issues and let the county government run the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rhonda. Up next will be Justin Saxon, and after Justin will be Brandon Burkhardt. And Brandon, you will need to enter the PIN when it is your turn. So up next will be Justin Saxon. Justin, you're self-muted. It is your turn. Can you hear us? All right, we're going to move on from Justin. It looks like he is now offline, and go on to Brandon Burkhardt. Brandon? He was there, looks like he has gone now. Going to move on to others that we know are in. David Estridge will be next, and then Tina Bryan after that. David Estridge. David, you are self-muted. If you can unmute, you'll be able to speak.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about the similar issue. I am going to read an expert, an excerpt from Alexander Stephens. He's the vice president of the Confederacy. This is from his cornerstone speech. In this speech, Stephens describing the pillars that found the Confederacy. He did so after recognizing the founding fathers were in error in their assumptions of all men are being created equal. This is his words. "Our new government is founded upon exactly the opposite ideas. Its foundations are laid, its cornerstone rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery, subordination to the superior race is his natural and normal condition. This, our new government, is the first in the history of the world based upon this great physical, philosophical, and moral truth." These were his words. This is what the Confederacy was about. "We have a spiritual, intellectual, a constitutional, and ethical duty to make the country a more perfect union. That's the beautiful thing about this country. As leaders, you are obligated to move us forward in whatever path you can to help achieve this. We would never tolerate from the Revolutionary War a monument to the redcoats or to King George. We just wouldn't. It wouldn't be constitutional. We would be up in arms. Blacks fought their Revolutionary War in the Civil War. I just read to you the pillars of the Confederacy. They fought against that, and they won their freedom. It is an insult to every black person, and you should have to. If you don't vote or you don't move to act against this, you should have to read these words to every black person you see because it's an affront to them. My son is an interracial child, and I would never let him on those grounds because their justice is supposed to be blind. In our cities and our community, we should be proud. And East Texas is better than this. You are better than this. You are obligated as leaders to move us forward. We would not allow King George or redcoats there. These people were founding a government against our Constitution based on, I quote, "on a great physical, philosophical, and moral truth that blacks were not equal to whites." It's not even up for debate. We've gone way too long having this there, and it's a brave thing to step forward and to raise your voice and lift up and say no more. And I hope all of you have that courage today to do whatever is in your power to address it because my child should never have to go to those courthouses, should never have to go to those grounds and encounter that kind of hate. The proper place for these things is in a museum, in our school systems where we can discuss them and have intellectual discourse about them. We're not asking you to burn it down. We're asking you to put it in its proper place. I thank you very much.
If you would, could you please state your name and address again, Dustin? If you would, please state your name and address again, Dustin.
David. It's David Estridge, Arp, Texas.
Arp, Texas. Thank you. All right, up next will be Tina Bryan. Again, everyone, please state your name and address. After Tina will be Cheryl Lynn Parr.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, Tina Bryan, 14 Elmwood, Longview, Texas. I've lived in Longview most of my life, and one of the other persons that spoke kind of hit what I wanted to talk about, but I really don't understand why we are discussing this matter with the city council. I mean, this is a county issue, and I don't know why we're wasting time and resources discussing this. As a matter of fact, this matter was taken up in commissioner's court where it belonged on Monday, this past Monday, and I know that everybody was not happy with the outcome, but you know, that's politics. It's just the way it goes. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose, and we're never going to make everybody happy. But I think it's a little bit arrogant on some of the city council members' heart to take this up. It isn't their issue. There are so many issues right now that are, that's affecting our city in every single district, and that is with this COVID, we've got people that are out of work or their hours have been cut. We have business owners such as myself where our business has been cut to 50%. We've got some businesses that will never be open again because of what has happened in these past six, seven, eight months. And I think it's kind of ridiculous that we're even discussing this on city time. I mean, we have got people that homelessness is up, assault, family violence is up, crime is up, drug and alcohol abuse is up. Our tax base has been, you know, totally destroyed because of the lack of businesses. And furthermore, I think that if I were judged out, I would be a little bit upset that the city is sticking their nose in the business of the county. I mean, you know, how would the city feel if judged out decided to come up into the city and say, hey, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, or I think we should do this and that and the other? It's, you know, the city needs to stay in their own lane on this issue, and if these council members, you know, feel differently, then maybe they need to run for commissioner's court and try to change things, you know, next time around. But we, we all have, you know, our specific jobs and duties that we are to do, and that's what we need to do, and leave, you know, just, just stay in your own lane. That's all I have to say, and thank you and goodbye.
Thank you. Up next will be Cheryl Lynn Parr, followed by Jan Brooks. Cheryl Lynn Parr will be next, followed by Jan Brooks. Cheryl, if you state your name and address, please. You are self-muted, so you will need to unmute.
There we go. Yes, this is Cheryl Lynn Parr. I'm on Terry Drive in Jefferson, Texas. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members. I would like to state that I am opposed to the removal of the statue of John Gregg. In listening to a previous person that spoke, David, and he spoke and where we were with the Revolutionary War, and I'd like to remind him that we had two wars with England, a Revolutionary War and the War of 1812, and yet today they are and will be one of our greatest allies, and the history that we share does not do away with that. It does not take away from the fact that we are very much partners in the world today. I would also like to remind anyone that to judge John Gregg simply by the Confederate War, the war between the states, is wrong. For anyone that might want to know, John Gregg moved to Texas in 1852. He moved to Fairfield, Texas. He was also a, prior to that, he was born in Alabama. He was a math professor. He studied law. He also served as a district judge in the great state of Texas from 1855 to 1860. The, the way that secession started, ironically, his father-in-law was very much a Unionist, and he was from Alabama and very much supported the Union. But John Gregg chose to support and do what he could at the time for Texas and for the Confederacy. He was well-loved, well thought of among the troops. As a matter of fact, he was the commander of the Texas Brigade and fought, they called him a soldier that always stuck his neck out because he was injured in an early battle and shot in the neck and survived, and then when he died at the age of 36 in the Battle of the Confederacy, he was again shot in the neck. I guess the point being is it made me want to go back and look at the actual history and look at the man and look at the good that he was able to do, and to judge him by just one thing, I think is wrong. I think that John Gregg was a good man and that we have honored him, and if you take the statue away, what's next? Are you going to rename Gregg County? I believe the statue should stay. That's my opinion, and thank you for allowing me to voice it.
Thank you. Up next will be Jan Brooks, and after Jan Brooks, it does look like Brandon Burkhardt has his audio fixed, so it'll be Jan Brooks and then Brandon Burkhardt. Jan, are you there? Jan, you're self-muted. Jan, can you hear us? All right, we can hear you now. Please state your name and address, Jan.
Okay, my name is Jan Brooks, and I'm on River Forest Drive in Round Rock, Texas. I'm a native Texan, and I'm really proud to be in this state, and thank you for hearing the voices of others not normally attending your meetings. I just want to say that I do oppose the removal of this monument, and I just want to remind you that all Texans voted on this issue regarding, in the primary, the 2020 primary elections, proposal 20, proposal seven stated that Texans should protect and preserve all historical monuments, artifacts, and buildings such as the Alamo Senataph and our beloved Alamo, and should oppose any reimagining of the Alamo site. Now, while Alamo was mentioned many times, it also says all historical monuments. So this is issue, this issue's already been voted on statewide, and I was among the 97.3% of Texans who passed that, and so I respectfully request that you table this issue and, and let that station, that statue stay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next will be Brandon Burkhardt, if he's got his audio working, and then after that will be Geraldine Austin. Geraldine Austin. Brandon, can you, can you give us a mic check for us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Brandon Burkhardt, 8903 Timber Elm in San Antonio, Texas, and I am also the president of This Is Texas Freedom Force, which is a nonprofit organization that works inside the great state of Texas on the preservation of Texas history. The previous speaker said it best. 97.5% of Texans across the state voted for Proposition Seven this year, which basically states, "Do not move any monument. Leave it all alone, including the Alamo Senataph, including every Texas historical monument across the state." We are an organization that has over 55,000 members statewide, and we are very, very active on working on the preservation of Texas monuments. What you are hearing by these petitions to remove these monuments are by the minority of Texans, not the majority. The majority of Texans have already spoke this year. The majority of Texans have helped us for the last two years, last three years, excuse me, to press a monument protection bill that will stop city councils and that will stop county commissioners from removing these monuments off of their place. And I would ask that if you guys want to continue to talk about this subject and you want to entertain the, the notion of moving a monument, that you allow the people of Texas and the people of your community to vote on this issue versus allowing just a couple of people that are appointed to a city council to make that decision for us because you'll find out that the majority of Texans and the majority of people inside of your community want to keep that monument exactly where it's at. You know, history, good, bad, or different, is still history, and it's there for us to learn from. It is there for us to teach ours, and it may be different from one person to another on how you want to teach that history, but it's there so that, you know, a wise man once said, "Those that do not understand history are doomed to repeat it." And so therefore, we want to make sure that we are teaching that lesson, and what better way than monuments inside the great state of Texas to be able to teach that to each individual out there? I just ask that you guys please leave the monument alone or at least let your constituents or the people of Texas vote on this before you make a decision, and I hope that you would listen to the other Texans that are calling in because the majority of Texans want this monument to stay right where it's at. Thank you, and God bless Texas.
Thank you. Up next will be Geraldine Austin. After Geraldine will be Steve Crane. Geraldine Austin, are you there? You're self-muted, Geraldine.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address.
Okay, I'm Geraldine Austin, and I'm from Level A in Texas. I, I am totally against removing this statue. You know, this, this is Texas history, and I think we need to keep Texas history right where it's at. We don't need to be moving all of our history out. Then it gives room to rewrite history, and I don't think we need that. This is our history. Let's keep it like it is. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next will be Steve Crane. After Steve will be Chelsea Laurie. Steve Crane, are you there?
I am. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity. Of course, if you don't know already, I obviously support removing the monument, and I think it's important to remember that we're not asking that it be destroyed, but that it be moved. And so, but I also want to thank Councilwoman Snotty for bringing this to your attention. And I know that the council is constrained in what they can do or not do, and I understand that they want to maintain a good and positive relationship with the county. So having said that, I think what's important to remember is that maybe this is, if I saw the agenda, it wasn't about whether to remove the monument or not. I think it's pretty well decided that that can happen. But what I think is that the council has an opportunity to talk about the elephant in the room, and that is the issue of race and how it impacts our community. And I would encourage the council members on, on this day to take that opportunity to decide to do just that. If it's not in public, then do it in private, but talk about race and how it impacts us on a daily basis. I heard that there were comments made about that there are more important issues. You know, prioritizing issues is certainly what the city is going to do, and, but to the, to the extent that this is an issue that impacts a large portion of our community, particularly white and black, myself included, then I think it's worth having that discussion. If you get riled, if you feel angry about having to do this, then I would ask you to, to look at yourself in the mirror and to take a long, hard thought about why it is that you're angry and upset about this particular issue. Again, it's the elephant in the room, and I think it's an opportunity to, for this council to take a leadership role in showing us how we as citizens of a great community can move forward and talk about difficult issues and in a civil and responsible manner. So I thank you for your time, and I'm done.
Steve, if you would please state your address, if you're still there?
Yes, I am. I apologize. It's, I live on Treetop Lane in Longview, Texas.
Thank you. Up next will be Chelsea Laurie, followed by Leroy Green. Chelsea, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Please state your name and address.
Okay, I am Chelsea Laurie, St. Elizabeth Drive. I'm 19 years old as well. Someone's, someone said that John Gregg was well-loved. He was well-loved by white people. I can guarantee that no single black person or any one of my ancestors would have cared at all about that man. Gregg County used to be Roanoke County, and there's no reason why we cannot change it back. Also, I noticed someone mentioned Proposition Seven. The Republican ticket had a proposition. A proposition, for those of you who don't know, is not a law. It's nothing but a question. Proposition Seven means absolutely nothing when it comes to the law. It is embarrassing that someone less than half your age knows better than you do, and I'm absolutely astounded at the amount of misinformation during this meeting. I am very proud of being from Texas. My family's been here for decades, and American history is so complex and diverse and unique, and it deserves to be remembered just like all of history does. I'm not here to change people's hearts or erase history. I'm just here to educate. I want people to know what happened to our ancestors and the suffering that the Confederacy caused. People can honor their own ancestors on their own property, but the government should not honor the traitors. This isn't about politics. What's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong, but there comes a time when you have to listen to your fellow Americans. The government should not honor a people that fought to enslave and murder other American human beings, nor should it honor a flag that was used to intimidate people of color and represents terrorists both past and present, like Dylann Roof since its creation. The courthouse should welcome everyone. Our government should welcome everyone. The only thing that that statue says is that only some of you are welcomed here. Only some of you will be honored by us as heroes. Only some of you will get the justice that you deserve. We know the city commissioners refuse to vote on. We know the cowardice shown by those who refuse to second the motion made by Commissioner Shannon Brown. There was no vote. There was no outcome. Education is the first step, and the moment the Longview recognizes that it should not honor a history that only some people could be proud of is the day that Longview becomes a better city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Up next is Leroy Green, followed by Leroy will be Angela Laurie. Leroy, are you there?
I am here.
Please state your name.
Yes, my name's Leroy Green, and I'm out of Anderson, Texas, and I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak. You know, the statue was built, I believe, and placed in 1911. In 1861 March, Texas decided to join in with the Confederacy, and you heard from the previous caller that they're, they want to change the name of the county now. They wanted, we want to change the name. Do we want to change the name of the state? You know, we, we all came together after the war, and it took a while, and we have grown in that last 100 years or so, and we had had a black president, Obama, and we have had black representatives and, and honor every one of them. And this isn't about black or white or, it, it's about history. It's about knowing where we came from and where we don't want to go back to, but we also know that not all these people, and most of these people were just citizens. They were not bad people, and we need to look at, we cannot judge them today's standard how they lived in 1861. We cannot do that. One day, they may want to take away Martin Luther King's, Junior's monument, and I will fight to protect that. I will fight to protect the monuments that are put there and that are being placed. That is our history. I respect Martin Luther King, Jr., and I, I love his, his monument, and I respect the monuments that came before him. This was not always, and it will never be, a perfect country, but we are trying to be perfect, and we are trying to learn and live and grow. And just like they said, Proposition Seven passed by over 97% of the vote. We do not want to get rid of the monuments. Texans do not want to. So I just wanted to leave you that we need to be loving people. We need to be caring to people, and we need to be understanding of where we come from and where we're going, and I appreciate your time. Appreciate you allowing us to speak.
Sean, are you there? Sean, are you there? While we're waiting for Sean to get back, we will move on. The next speaker will be Angela Laurie. Ms. Laurie, are you there?
Uh, I'm sorry about that. This is Richard Yankley. Oh, Angela Laurie just got on.
Okay, first of all, this is a symbol of hate. This is on taxpayers' property. Okay, and all of the voters and the citizens of Gregg County were not given a choice to put it on the county property. It was forced on black people to accept it and that in, that in itself is wrong. It was not voted to put it there, so why should we vote it to keep it there? This is why, this is why it needs to be removed and put in a museum. And that statue of, of John Gregg, the slave owner, or this Confederate soldier is not a hero to me. Anybody that had slaves or would go to war for definitely did not fight for me. You don't entomb something that you love. They fought for the business of slavery. This is hate. Can you tell me it's a symbol of love and equality for mankind and they fought for me? I keep hearing a lot of people saying it's our history. Yes, it's history, but it ought to be a shameful history, especially to those who support keeping the statue. Because those times were evil, they were barbaric and they were uncivilized. Today in twenty twenty, if people from the north were at war with, with people from the south, the feds would call the National Guard to break it up. Where's the honor in that? That statue belongs in a museum. It's a shameful part of history. If you want to commemorate the dead, okay, then it belongs in a cemetery. It's not right to keep it on taxpayer property. It's a symbol of hate. Thank you.
This is Sean Herrick. Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, I can, Sean.
Great. Apologies about that. Apparently my mic decided to stop working. All right, um, up next we will have Jay Woland and then Wayne Howell. Jay Woland? Audio is not currently on. Uh, let's see. Uh, Wayne Howell? If he is interested in speaking. You are unmuted if you want to leave a self unmute. Wayne Howell, if you're there? Okay, don't have Wayne. We will try Jay one more time to see if he's available. Not, still does not appear to be available. Mandel Stoker, apologize for that. We'll go back to Mandel. Mandel, are you there? You are self muted though. Mandel Stoker? Appears to be away. All right, we'll try to come back to them in a moment. Uh, we'll move forward is, uh, Carrie Esposito. Esposito?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Carrie Esposito and I reside on, uh, Trailwood Lane in Longview, Texas. And before I make my remarks, I do want to again, because it seems like some people are confused as to what they voted on. The proposition that they are claiming ninety-seven point three Texans agreed on was a proposition in the Republican primary. It was not anything that we voted on as a state. I'm a lifelong resident of Gregg County. I was raised in Longview and I've raised my children here. I'm a fourth generation, um, of my family to also be a small business owner in Longview. Receiving my education here, I learned, of course, about Texas history. I'm a proud sixth generation Texan. I can trace my family's history here back to before Texas became a state and when we were still under the rule of Mexico. I can only do this because my family chose to come here. They were not forced, they were not owned. Our history is not something that we have really reckoned with. It is a revisionist history at best. Our schoolchildren still hear that the Civil War was over states' rights and that the men that fought for those rights were heroes. And the Texas Declaration of Causes to secede from the Union, in the third paragraph in the first reason for us leaving, these words are, um, said. She, meaning Texas, was received as a commonwealth holding, maintaining and protecting the institution known as Negro slavery, the servitude of the African to the white race within her limits. A relation that existed from the first settlement of her wilderness by the white race and which her people intended should exist in all future time. We literally fought to own slaves for all time. Unfortunately, this is not the history that we are sharing with our children. The reason I see stated that the statue should remain is that so we don't forget history nor repeat it. I pray first of all that the institution of slavery we all by now know should never be repeated. But the erasing of history has only happened because we erected statues of honor over a cause that was not honorable. One of the things life has taught me is you can't look at a person that is in pain and tell them that they're not hurting. You can't determine their pain, but what you can do is believe them. I believe the people that tell me that these statues cause them pain. I'm listening to them, I'm hearing them, I'm trusting that they're telling me the truth. Doing the right thing is often extremely difficult. It's seldom popular, but it is still always right to do what is right. And the right thing right now is to remove this statue from the grounds of a building that represents justice. It doesn't heal all the pain in the past, but it is a start and a start that we need to not push to a different point in the future. I really hope that this statue is removed soon from the courthouse line. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna try, uh, Mandel Stoker again. It looks like he might be available. Mandel, are you there? Can you, can you try your microphone for us? No, might, still, might not be available. We're gonna go ahead to Chris Oliver and then afterward we'll try Gary Neese. So we're gonna go to Chris Oliver and Gary Neese. Chris, are you there?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please state your name and address.
Uh, thank you to the city council, uh, for this time. My name is Chris Oliver and my address is ninety-two eighteen Fitzgerald Way in Missouri City, Texas. Um, uh, very quickly here, th- this statue was provided by the United Dollars of the Confederacy, which is a group that's established to provide monuments, well, in part to provide monuments, to honor Confederate soldiers who fought in the Civil War for the right of newly seceded states to continue to enslave and terrorize a critical mass of a population. The statue is of an armed Confederate soldier and its inscription presents a theme that laments the loss of that soldier as well as the lost opportunity to continue the socio-economical benefits of slavery due to the defeat of the Confederacy in the Civil War. That statue is currently available for view twenty-four hours a day and thus it continues to offend countless generations of people who do not support the ideals of Confederacy and fully do not support the overwhelming support that the Confederacy put forth for slavery. We currently seek to dignify the community in this space by becoming a more inclusive, uh, community in our worries, actions, and in this case, our institutions. Uh, I support the removal of the statue due to the strong groundswell of the support of the community and because in view of history, it is a pivotal step in the direction of decency. Um, you know, and in, in view to the possible action that I've been hearing on the call today, I do not support moving the statue to any other public station, museum, or institution of learning and the rationale for that is that the action quite literally transplants the statue from one public station to the next public station and it doesn't effectively constitute a removal. It's rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic or better yet, since we all grew up in Texas and smothering a football culture, it means that we punt, but we do so on first down because we've never truly confronted the issue that is in front of us. For over a hundred years, we've deflected. Transplanting the monument doesn't logically interface with the scope of the issue that we have in front of us today. Uh, one comment that we hear, uh, the Confederate statue represents history and heritage and removal of it will erase history. The rebuttal to this is that is factually incorrect. Its removal does not erase history, but rather it enhances history by not glorifying a space in our past, which when competently assessed can only be determined to be villainous. A quote from a Civil War historian, Kevin Levin, goes, "In suggesting history is being erased by removing these statues, what is often missed is that these monuments already erase history by selecting what will be remembered and how it will be remembered. When presented truthfully, Confederate soldiers, one, fought violently to keep slaves enslaved and two, for the economic prosperity that slavery could continue to bring to the slave owner. The latter would qualify the Confederates to be considered by the term ironically coined by Ronald Reagan that they were the original welfare kings and welfare queens, meaning that they committed to have the oppressed engaged in labor so that they, that they should perform themselves and that they gave up their citizenship to go to war to preserve their oppressive position."
Mr. Oliver, that is the end of your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, up next will be Gary Neese, followed by Stephen Shore. Gary Neese, followed by Stephen Shore. Gary, uh, can you hear us? Can you do a mic check for us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please state your name and address.
First of all, my name is Gary Neese and I live on Gregg Tech Road in Longview, Texas. I'm also the county chairman for the Republican Party of Gregg County. And I, I, I have to wonder why this is being brought up here in, uh, the city council for many reasons, but one, no matter what outcome comes from the city council meeting, if there even is a vote, it doesn't do anything because you cannot, you have no authority to remove that. And so what you're doing is you're giving hope, possible hope, to people who might want that down, torn down. And now, if you can't do anything about it, and even if you vote a ceremonial vote of yes, let's tear it down, knowing it means nothing, you're gonna cause more anger. And for the people who want it there and you vote for it to be taken down, you're gonna be causing more anger. So this whole thing is very divisive. You don't think that right now. You think you're giving all these people a voice, but if you go through this little ritual of a vote, which means nothing because you have no authority, you have no jurisdiction for anything associated with Gregg County, you are going to cause more anger. And that's what you have to realize. Why are you doing this? To give people a voice? Then fine, have, tell them, this is just to have a voice. There will no, not be a vote. Tell them upfront, there will be no vote. But if you go through some silly vote, which means nothing, you are going to cause more anger. I'm not gonna speak for against this. I'm speaking against anger and you're going to create more. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I apologize on mispronouncing your state, Mr. Neese. Um, up next will be Stephen Shore, followed by Randy Beal. Stephen Shore, followed by Randy Beal. Stephen, are you there?
I'm here.
Wonderful. Please state your name and address.
Uh, Stephen Shore, Lakeside Drive, Longview. Uh, I'm fifty-seven years old and was raised and have lived in Longview for most of my life. It is a great town with great people. In regard to the Confederate monument, after thoughtfully listening to the arguments on both sides of this issue and reading of the history of this specific monument and others like it in general, and after renewing my knowledge of the, uh, Civil War and the time period immediately after that time in our, in our history, I've come to support my fellow citizens of all races who advocate for the removal and relocation of this monument. The time for this monument to be prominently displayed at the center of our county government and our community, Longview, is, is over in my opinion. It should be moved to a place where those who still profess a strong affection towards the Confederacy and for what it stood for, they can revere it as is their American, as, as it is their right as American citizens. However, it just cannot be denied that this monument represents a cause and idea that not all citizens are created equal and that some people do not have the same rights as others based solely on their race. This is just not what America is all about and what we were founded on. A monument like this does not belong at the center of our government. And in, in this case, I think it ju- the main thing is it matters where the monument is. The location of the monument reflects the values of the community. And probably when the monument was moved to the courthouse in nineteen thirty-two, I've got a feeling that that probably did reflect the values of the community in nineteen thirty-two. But there is no way that this community would allow that monument to be newly brought in to the courthouse in this day and age in twenty twenty. Uh, I, I just don't believe from, from talking with the people in, in the community that that would ever be allowed today. So it, it just needs to be moved. And, um, I think that the message that it will send to the community is, is very powerful and I think that it would, I think it would be a great, um, a thing for Longview to be the, one of the first cities and counties in East Texas to do something like this. And I do hate that the city council's having to take this up, but I think it would send a powerful message to the county commissioners court who quite frankly, uh, punted the ball and, uh, didn't have the guts to, uh, stand up and let us know where they stood on this, uh, on, on this, uh, uh, issue. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Up next will be Randy Beal, followed by Thomas Reister. So it's Randy Beal, followed by Thomas Reister. Randy?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Please state your name and address.
My name is Randy Beal. I live in, uh, Spring, Texas. I am, uh, director with This is Texas Freedom Force. Uh, you heard from our president earlier, uh, our organization spends a lot of time crisscrossing the state, standing in front of these monuments to keep them from being torn down by, uh, a lady called earlier, she was calling us a terrorist, but the real terrorists are the ones that are destroying the, uh, property of the county and the states by ripping these monuments down. Um, we stand, our motto is to, uh, protectors of all things Texas. And, um, that is exactly what we do. Um, whatever monument it is, it doesn't matter whether it's a monument, uh, statue, uh, cenotaph, uh, plaque, whatever it is, we'll come and defend it and keep it from being destroyed. Uh, we've done that time and time again over the last three years and spending a lot of time in the Texas legislature trying to get a monument protection bill passed, which, uh, 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 there's a good chance that we're gonna get it done this year. So, um, we could, uh, we wouldn't be here right now if we would have gotten it passed if our legislators would have, uh, opened their eyes and got it passed back then. But, uh, uh, some of us, matter of fact, most of us that have spent time in front of these monuments, uh, we've had our life threatened many, many times by the Black Liberation Movement, the Red Guard, Brown Berets, Democrat Socialist of America, and that is who that we're fighting on this. You have to understand the ones that want to destroy these monuments are all leftist communist organizations and they're entrenched deep in the government and we're trying to out those out so that we won't have to do this anymore. So, uh, once the, once the monument is down and gone and destroyed, um, there's not a lot we can do because it's under, uh, in a locked up warehouse like the ones in San Antonio are. Uh, the lady mentioned earlier about some of these should be belong, belong in a cemetery. Well, that'd be fine and dandy if they would leave the ones alone in the cemetery, but there was a huge monument of, uh, Robert E. Lee that was in a cemetery in Dallas, Texas that was torn down. So the cemetery argument is, uh, null and void. Um, lastly, um, I just wanna, I wanna thank y'all for giving me the time, even though this is not a city council issue. Our historian put out a memo on that, said this is a county issue and, uh, it's clearly that the county has spoken on it. So, uh, I appreciate y'all's time. God bless y'all. God bless Texas.
Up next will be Thomas Reister, followed by Karita Duncap. Thomas Reister, followed by Karita Duncap. Thomas, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Thomas Reister. I'm from San Antonio, Texas. I'd just like to thank you guys for bringing this up. It gives an opportunity for someone like me to talk on a place like this. I'm a civil reenactor, well, I was, and I was a libidistorian up in Missouri, which was state-sponsored and I was in the third Missouri Confederate infantry. And I fought on many battlefields and when you do that, you had to follow certain rules. And I would just like to say that it's more than a statue. And I don't know if people know history, they'll argue this point, but even the thirty-four Texas cavalry was a mixed-race unit. Louisiana had a full black regiment during the Confederate. It's not black and white, folks. It's very gray during the Confederate, during this whole Civil War thing. You had over fifty thousand blacks fight You had over fifty thousand blacks fight for the Civil War, for the South, I'm sorry. And then when they fought for the South, unlike the North, when we paid them half wages, the Confederacy actually told them, paid the black soldiers full wage. And these were not workers, these were not trench diggers, these were actual soldiers. Jeb Stuart had black bodyguards. These were his own cavalry unit. So, you know, even if you even watch some of the movies, you'll hear him say, we should have freed the slaves before we fired on September. That's true. As a Native American, I'll tell you how far this will go, because I see statues of cowboys and fighting Indians and everything, and I could say the same thing. I could say that offends me, take that down. That's not the way to go. Keep the statues up. Teach the history. That's all I have to say. God bless Texas.
Um, next will be Karita Dunkaff followed by Ronnie Esposito. Karita Dunkaff followed by Ronnie Esposito. Karita, are you there? Karita, you're on mute. Are you there? Uh, you, see. Karita, can you hear us? There you are. Okay, you, you seem to be unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Can you do a test for us again, Karita? Okay, we're gonna move on and we'll come back to you in a moment if we can, if you send me a message if you, you wish. Uh, let's see, uh, Ronnie Esposito, are you there, Ronnie? Don't see Ronnie anymore. Okay, moving along. Uh, we've got La Kendrick Fight followed by Dana Huber. Uh, La Kendrick Fight followed by Dana Huber. La Kendrick, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address.
Yeah. La Kendrick Fight, uh, twenty-eight twelve Amberwood Drive, Longview, Texas. Of course, I am for removal Uh, a lot of people say, well, this is a county issue. Well, it may be a county issue, but it's inside the city limits. So that's, that's a big issue. And so, but first I want to call out
La Kendrick, I think we may have lost your audio.
It's the mayor. Raggedy Andy Mack. You try to literally make an excuse of not saying anything about, about the monument, you know, when it was brought to your attention, your excuse was, it's, it's on kind of property. I don't know.
La Kendrick, I'm, I'm sorry, your audio keeps cutting in and out. I'm sorry, we're going to
About now. Check, test, and test.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next speaker. I'm sorry that we were having trouble hearing your audio. Um, let me see if Karita is still there. Karita, are you still there? We're gonna come back around. Karita, can you do a sound check for us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please state your name and address.
Um, my name is Karita Dunkaff, and I live in Longview, Texas.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Um, I moved here twenty years ago to attend Letourneau University. I met my college sweetheart, I married him, and together we have made Longview our home. It is for this reason that Longview is our home that I speak to you today. I'm incredibly grateful for the efforts of Councilwoman Snotty, Chelsea Laurie, Shay Harkless, and innumerable other individuals who have answered this call for justice in our city. Even though they have been verbally harassed, threatened, and outright ignored by county commissioners, they have persisted. They understand, as do I, that Longview is home to a rich, diverse group of people who love this city and each other. This warm, inviting city has become my home. That has become my home, has no ideological place for a thirty-five foot tall statue dedicated to so-called Confederate heroes. I hear the argument that this is not a city council issue, and it should be left to the county. As a citizen who recently reached out to my elected representatives and has yet to receive any response, aside from deflection and it's not my job, I want to share what may be a helpful analogy. To be clear, I generally dislike using analogies. In my mind, the only thing like racism is racism. There is no adequate comparison. Therefore, I won't attempt to make an analogy about racism, the Confederacy, the Civil War, or even monuments in other states and other countries. Instead, I will attempt to speak to your elected position in our city. I am a year-ten teacher. It is my job to teach the students entrusted to my care. It is also my duty to best, to do my best to meet the needs that they present to me. When students and parents bring concerns to me that I cannot personally address, it would be completely unacceptable for me to tell them that their problem isn't my job. I am duty-bound to pass along their concerns and needs to administrators who can help or intervene, and this is true regardless of my perception of the relative magnitude of the problems they present. In this city and county, are our elected officials not duty-bound to hear and address our concerns rather than dismiss them? I hear too that the statue represents history. It's vital to note that the statue doesn't represent all of Texas history. There are more appropriate, joyful, meaningful historical events that can be captured and memorialized in its place. I hope and pray that as citizens who have not felt they had a voice before continue to come forward, that you will listen to our calls for action. Remove the monument. It does not represent the one Longview I call home. It has no place here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go to Dana Huber, and then we're gonna try La Kendrick Fight again after that to see if he has a better audio connection. Um, Dana Huber, and then we'll go to La Kendrick Fight. Dana, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Please state your name and address and continue.
Good evening. My name is Dana Huber. My address is six oh-three Harmon Drive in Longview. I've been a resident of Longview since nineteen ninety-seven. I grew up in Houston, and I moved here to attend Letourneau University, met my husband there, and we are currently raising our four children, ages thirteen through eighteen, here in this community. And let me start by saying, we love this city. We've chosen to stay here, even though my husband's job wanted us to move. We said no. He found another job because we love the people here and we love the community here. An important and vital part of loving and investing in a community means taking the time to address things that are not beneficial for a community as a whole, for all of its citizens, new and old heritage, male and female, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, rich and poor. Out of our love for this city, we need to address the things that are preventing growth in several areas. And so first, I want to thank the city council for hosting this conversation. I know a lot of people have already commented that the Greg County Commissioners have spoken, so there's no use in beating a dead horse. Leave it alone. What can the city do? Let me clarify again, the commissioners did not speak. The majority stayed silent by not even casting a vote. They chose the easy way out. They chose politics over beneficial growth. So let me tell you what our city can do. We can come together, we can have a conversation that welcomes compassion and understanding into the minds and hearts of our citizens and its government. Out of that, we can begin to address obstacles to our growth, and we can stand united for the change that is beneficial to this community. Nothing is ever settled. Culture changes, society changes, and what it values changes, and thankfully, laws change as well. What a community recognizes as beneficial changes, and we must be willing to address these changes as they arise. Here's what we need to do. We need to stop being afraid of calling a spade a spade, and right now, this monument is a point of separation in our community, but it is possible to come together and agree on a solution. It's been moved once before, it was on the corner of Fredonia and Tyler, and it can be moved again, um, preferably to a private property that is not funded by current taxpayers' money. Let private donors do what they will. I'm not for censorship or for destroying someone else's stone idols for them, but I certainly will stand against anything that stands in the midst of the community I call home. I think that if we come together as a city, and if the city council stands in support of this, united, we can go before the county again. We can say, look, we are standing together, we are standing united, and respectfully, we are not going to let this i- issue continue any longer. This isn't the first time this has come up, this is simply the first time where enough ears have started listening. Thank you for your time.
Next, we're gonna try to go back to La Kendrick Fight to see if his audio is working better. Following that, we will go to Kelly Ramone. La Kendrick, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you a little bit, but your audio is not coming through clearly. We'll give it a try and see if we can hear okay.
All right, all right, great. Um, I am a native of Longview. My address is twenty-eight twelve Amberwood Drive, Longview, Texas. And as I stated earlier, that, um, yeah, how can we unite when the issue, uh, like this, of this monument, he went? And yeah, it's on tactile, it's on the courthouse property, but like I said, it starts with the mayor. And by him staying silent is a big issue that let us know that we're not united. And, and, and yeah, I sent you the petition, you didn't, you didn't touch it. I waited for you to respond to it, and since you didn't respond to it, I went ahead and told you how it felt. All the other great mayors throughout the U.S., they did the right thing. They didn't even hesitate. They went ahead and got the, uh, monument removed. And like I said, that's leadership. That's leadership. And so by you remaining silent and making an excuse, you are a coward. You running from the truth. You are in a position to make a decision that you don't even want to make. You might as well give up your position and do something else. But I tell you what, I promise you this, I would do everything in my power to bring you down if you try to run for something else. Because like I said, this will stick with you. You ain't gonna run from this. Like I said, if you are a racist, say it. And if you're gonna be that, be that and stay that, but don't run from the truth. This is, and stuff like this, they wonder why people of color act the way they act. But if you're in a position and you getting paid to make a decision, don't just keep quiet about it. I don't even know how the crap, you sleep well at night, knowing that this is going on in, in the city's limit that you abide by. But like I told you, when I messaged you, I only voted for you because my mom told me to. But if I know now what I knew then, I wouldn't have voted for you. Because like I said, when it's on the line, when it's time to make a decision, you find out who you are. Either you are a coward, or you're gonna step up to the plate and make a decision. But I advise you step down and admit it. But if you want to be that, be that, and you tell everybody that, what you are, their respect, respect you better. That's all I have to say. I yield back.
Um, next we have Kelly Ramone followed by Nathan Fleer. Kelly Ramone followed by Nathan Fleer. Kelly, are you there? You are self-muted, Kelly. Are you there? There you are.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Kelly Ramon, and I reside on one-ten East Hawkins Parkway in Longview, Texas. And I came up with a few words that I wanted to say. Um, this is what I have to say. Times are different, the country is moving forward, the significance of monuments like the one currently in front of our courthouse is finally coming to light. I know I don't need to go into a history lesson on the Confederacy and the Civil War with all of you who are listening. That alone should be enough to prove how racism played a huge role in the Civil War as well as the drive of the Confederate Army. It is time for the city and the residents of Longview to move forward and to think about whether or not monuments like these are a representation of who we truly are. As my good friend Stephen Crane mentioned earlier, we only support the relocation of new monuments. It does not belong in front of the courthouse. Oh, and to you, Mayor Mack, and some of you council, council members, excuse me, if I may add, I respectfully think it's only fair that I address that Longview residents should only be allowed to address in this or any other future council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next will be Nathan Fleer followed by Kay Robinson. Nathan Fleer followed by Kay Robinson. Nathan, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello. Can you hear me?
Hello. If we can, please state your name and address and continue.
My name is Nathan Fleer. I live in, um, Katy, Texas. And my great-great-grandparents, they grew, my great-great-grandparents grew up in a time when they had to refer to themselves as, uh, Black Dutch, because if they admitted that they were Choctaw and Cherokee, that was frowned upon. So my question to you is, when are you gonna move the town? Because the way I see it, that, that's my land originally, right? But see, here's the thing, my great-great-grandparents, they learned to forgive the white and black individuals who took their land. They forgave and they moved on. And what I push at is that if you somehow are still harboring resentment for the Confederacy and you feel hatred when you walk past, uh, that particular monument, maybe you need to step back and examine your capacity to forgive as well. Because it's not causing you any harm. You're causing that to yourself. Now, another important thing to, for reason to leave it there, I think, is to have that tactile reminder. Because people often talk a lot about teaching about the past and things, and if that reminder is there, then say in the future, if I'm walking my kids by and I say, hey, look, you know, or they say, hey, who's that? I can explain a little bit about what happened in the past. But if that's not there, it's tactile reminder. You can read about it in a book, but it doesn't have the same effect. And then you start getting things like up in New York, um, in, um, Columbia University, where they started segregating their graduation. They have their white graduation, their black graduation, their white dorm, their black dorm. And I'm just waiting for them to come out with their new white and black drinking fountains. And a lot of the young people think it's wonderful, you know, each one's bare off with their own kind, right? Or at least that was the argument for Jim Crow, and that's starting to take hold again because they don't have those tactile reminders. Now, if you ask any of the older people who live through that, they have the reminder because they lived through it, and they think it's a horrible thing. But for future generations, we need to have the tactile reminder there so that they can remember it. Um, so I'm in favor of leaving it there as an example, so we have that reminder. And I will leave you with this, if, if you recall, George Orwell said that every record's been destroyed or falsified, every book's been rewritten, every picture's been repainted, every statue and street building has been renamed, every date has been altered, history's stopped, nothing exists except the endless present where the party is always right. So if you remove that and give yourself the ability to rewrite that history, then all that's gonna come back and you're doomed to repeat it. So I'm in favor of leaving it there as an example to future generations so that we can have that there to, you know, explain what happened and, uh, why we don't ever do that again. So we don't end up with issues like we're just slowly creeping back in in New York. And of course, California just repealed their Civil Rights Act, so they're gonna start doing the segregation as well. So that's all coming back. And that's the true white supremacy right there, is people who are trying to get rid of these, um, examples of the past and bring all that back. So leave it there. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you for, I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you very much.
Up next is Kay Robinson and then Jamaria Brooks. Kay Robinson and then Jamaria Brooks. Kay is online, but it looks like she doesn't have audio, uh, or, uh, to be able to call in and speak. Kay, it doesn't look like you have signed in with a phone call. Uh, so if you want to speak, you will need to call back in at that time. Um, Jamaria Brooks would be next. Jamaria, are you there? You are self-muted. Jamaria, are you there? If not, uh, we're gonna go back and see if Sylvia Brooks is there. Sylvia Brooks. Looks like, nope, Sylvia's not there either. Uh, Jasmine Stoker, are you there, Jasmine? Okay, Jasmine, we're gonna unmute you. Wonderful. Jasmine, if you'll state your name and address.
My name is Jasmine Stoker, and my address is one-two-zero-five John Street. Um, I just wanna say that I think that the importance of a story lies in how it's told. Many of us love movies, but we love them because the producers, the directors, the actors were able to come together and lay out a plot that made sense, a plot that told the story well. And when that story isn't told well, we leave the movie feeling like, what in the heck did we just watch? But I didn't come here today to share with you guys about movies, but the power of storytelling and reiterating the history cannot be erased. The story cannot be made pretty. Slavery, Jim Crow laws, the Confederate Army, the naming of Greg County, the assassination of black leaders, mass incarceration, the high infant mortality rates for African-American women in this city cannot be framed in any way other than terrible. And to tell that story in any other way would And to tell that story in any other way would leave, would leave many potholes that leave us with misunderstandings of what we are actually petitioning today. We are not saying, don't tell the history or remember the Confederate soldier that is memorialized outside of the courthouse, rather that when we tell that story, we do so correctly. Because if we don't, we run the risk of harming those whose this, whose history is negatively tied to this memorialization. By removing that statue, we give the person looking at the statue, the opportunity to remember the story in context. We give Longview the opportunity to tell the story in context. We get Longview the opportunity to look at our history and say, we messed up, but we're going to fix it now. And we want to stand with the people who are hurt by watching this. Now, I understand that regardless of good intentions and remembrance or family connection or commemoration of history, although I'm not naive enough to think that everyone has good intentions that's on this phone call. I know that the city of Longview and its citizens are making a statement, one way or another, in the decision about this monument. And the impact of that statement will either show the story, will, will either show that in the story of Longview, we will be storytellers that deal with our history in a way that prevents these mistakes in the future, or we will be storytellers who miss our opportunity to create a legacy of hope by extending a narrative or an argument about memorials filled with holes and misunderstandings and unclear facts. To tell the truth will be uncomfortable. It will be frustrating, but it will be a refreshing change from the norm. We don't want to remove this statue from history, rather we want to tell the story truthfully. And by moving this monument, you have the courage to tell the real story. So I vote that we move it. And that's my time.
Thank you. Up next, we're gonna see Veronica Williams is there. And then we'll try Dominique Johnson. Veronica Williams and then Dominique Johnson. Veronica, you are self muted. Are you there?
I am here.
Wonderful. Please state your name and address.
My name is Veronica Williams. My address is 913 Walnut Hill Drive. I'm a lifetime member, uh, citizen of Longview, Texas. And I want to thank Nona Snotty for just giving us the opportunity to have an opportunity, to express ourselves about that monument. I realize that the county commissioner's court has, um, made their decision. But here's something I would like for you to think about. I have a daughter. And if my daughter was raped, brutalized, sold, sex trafficked, if something like that was to occur to her, and God blessed me to get her back. But when I walked out my door, there was a huge picture of the person that victimized her. And I had to look at that every day because I couldn't take that down. How do you think that make, would make me as a mom feel? How do you think this makes us as citizens to look at a statue that know that it represents the darkest time of our history? I don't understand how anybody could celebrate it, but I know people hold on to their history for whatever reason. So there's a place for that. There's a African American museum in DC. And I choose to go there and I choose to learn the history. And there was so much there that I didn't know. So if I want to know more about the history of the Confederacy, put it in a museum where I choose to go and I choose to learn. I could take my child or my grandchild to see it. But don't put it where I have to go. I have to go and pay my taxes. I have to go and take care of county, uh, matters. Why do I have to see that? It's nothing about that statue that brings joy to me. And as far as a person speaking that does not live here, does not pay taxes here, I don't think they have that right. And for that, I am grateful for the opportunity to speak my choice and to be hers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna go to Dominique Johnson. Dominique Johnson. And then after that will be Larry Washington. Dominique Johnson and then Larry Washington. Dominique, are you there? You're there, but self muted at the moment. Dominique, are you there? All right, hearing none, we will move to Larry Washington. After Larry Washington, we are going to go to Laura DeWolf. Laura DeWolf. So we're gonna go with Larry Washington. Larry, are you there? Looks like he is no longer, oh, he is listed as Reverend, Reverend Larry Washington. You are self muted. There you are. We can hear you now. Please state your name and address.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, my name is Larry Washington. Uh, uh, address is 1501 Stonewall Drive, Longview, Texas. Uh, I've lived in Longview for, for 60 years. Uh, actually recently retired from a company after working for 40 years. And I'm just going to read what I actually read to our commissioner's court and then have a few comments after that as well. And so what I read to our commissioner's court was that I'm not here to speak about what they're asking concerning the Confederate monument, but rather what they are not asking. They're not asking to remove the name Greg from the county. They're not asking. They're not asking to remove the name Greg from the precinct. They're not asking. They're not asking you to remove the name Greg from the courthouse. They're not asking. But what they are asking is will you make a decision to remove the Confederate monument from the Greg County Courthouse lawn? Or will you let the law for this Confederate monument make a decision for you to let it stay in its current location by kicking a cannon down the road for someone else to deal with later on? Or will you be the one to etch your name in history for having the courage to make a change for the times in which we're living in? Sometimes you choose the moment in which to stand up and make a change. And there are times when the moment choose you to make a change. And this is your moment. And having said that, I've heard some that actually stated that, that, uh, on this call that it, this is not a, a issue for the city. Uh, but truly it is. And the reason why I say issue for the city, a long reason is because the city hadn't spoken up. Uh, and we are bringing it to the city because the city hadn't, hadn't, hadn't joined in with us, uh, to try to make a decision uh, on what needs to happen. And so this is one of the things that, that we can all get behind and try to work on together as a unit. And I say that because, because if we don't stand up at this particular time, then when would be the right time to stand up? Uh, I want to read a quick scripture here and it's in 2nd Peter, 2nd Peter, chapter 3, verse 10. It said, "But the day of the Lord will come as a thief in the night, and he wished the heavens shall pass away in a great noise, and the elements shall melt with fervent heat. The earth and all so the works that are therein shall be burned up." And so will we say to the Lord when he come to destroy everything that's on this earth, that this statue cannot be destroyed, that it cannot be removed? I beg the difference, we won't be able to say that to the Lord, but when we got the opportunity in our hands. And one day, if we don't make that decision, some of our young kids, grandkids and great grandkids will make that decision for us. And now as we have this opportunity, even if we need to go back, it's, it's, it's really sad that we can come together and yell for our Longview lowbows when it come time to winning a state championship. But we cannot come together as a city for something as small as nothing but a monument that stands for nobody's good, but for everybody's cause to be said. With that, I yield back my time.
Up next will be Laura DeWolf, followed by Mark Gray. Laura DeWolf, followed by Mark Gray. Laura, are you there? Looks like you are self muted currently. Laura, are you there? One more try for Laura. Okay, we will try to go ahead and move on to Mark Gray. Mark Gray, are you there? Looks like you might not be in the meeting anymore, Mark. All right, we're gonna move forward to Tammy Porter. Tammy is still in the meeting. If she's not, looks like she's not here anymore either. Uh, let's see, Chris Williams, also no longer in the meeting. And Jeremiah Hunter. Jeremiah, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address.
All right, Jeremiah Hunter, 314 East Twilight Drive. I'm first, I wanted to speak on item six, which is, uh, levying the tax, adopting the tax rate and levying said tax rate. I just want to remind the council, um, you might be keeping the same tax rate as what is said before, but, uh, make sure you don't pat yourselves on the back too much. Um, because we still had a rise in property valuations. Therefore, even with the same tax rate, you're still going to be taking more dollars from taxpayers than you were last year. And all of this in the middle of a recession and who knows what's going to be happening this coming year. Uh, so you need to keep that in mind. I realize that my few words here are not going to change your mind. Uh, but I'm just making my voice heard, letting you know that there's some of us out here that are still pretty mad about, uh, government taking more money from us, uh, in the middle of a recession. I think it's just unconscionable. Uh, so you might be, uh, facing some opposition next spring. I'll just leave it at that. Uh, since I have two minutes left, uh, I will go ahead and speak on item four, uh, which is of course the monument discussion item. I am aware that this is just a discussion item, but I'll echo the words of those spoken before. Greg County is the proper government body to be addressing this issue because that's the property on which it's located. And, um, the county commissioner's already, uh, made that decision. So those here who are trying to egg on city council, uh, need to be going to the proper authorities and not wasting the council's time. It's been about, what, an hour and 20 minutes now of people speaking on an issue that the city council literally has no authority to address. Uh, I'm not saying that citizens should not have a voice. I am the biggest proponent there is of citizens having a voice. And of course, you are welcome to petition your government for address of grievances. That's in our US Constitution. So you're doing that, but you, you also need to be aware of the proper modes in which to do that. But since we're here talking about it, uh, I wanted to just, um, make sure that, um, you know, uh, I, I needed to say that, um, this, there, there's, I wanted to address the, 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 the thing about that the, this statue is supposedly a, a representation of hate. Well, I just want to ask those who make that argument, can you point to a single local hate crime that has specifically been inspired by that monument? And I'm pretty sure the answer is no. You cannot point to a single person that has conducted a hate crime who said, yep, that monument made me do it. Uh, it just, it's just not possible to do. Um, so also I just wanted to say, um, those of you that are for advocating monuments, make sure that you know who you're getting yourselves involved with. This monument removal crowd, they want to erase everything about America. They're not just opposing racism. So research who you lump yourselves in with. Thank you very much.
Up next, we're going to go to Wayne Howell. Wayne Howell, we tried earlier, but he's raised his hand now. Wayne, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. If you would state your name and address.
Wayne Howell, 2619 Teague Road in Houston. Uh, appreciate you guys giving all of us this opportunity to speak on this subject. Um, you know, I, my family has their reunions in Longview, so I'm very familiar with the town. I personally have never seen any racial issues there. It's a very nice town. Everybody's very friendly. Um, I personally do not think this country is moving forward by moving all these statues. Uh, it is about an agenda and, uh, this country is just being divided like never before. And that's the way I feel about that. Uh, the removals are not helping the issues at hand. Uh, history will repeat itself if it's allowed to go on. Um, I've never had a problem with any statue I've ever seen. Black, white, whatever the statue might be representing. Uh, it, I just don't look at that statue and go, oh, that's, it's a problem. I'm going to have to take it down or, or I'm upset. And I've got to file a motion against it, that kind of thing. I, I just, it's not, it's not an issue to me. I don't think it should be with anybody. This is, is something that has come up very recently in the last year or two. And, you know, the Saul Ross statue was being targeted and so is Stevie Ray Vaughan statue. I mean, come on, that's, that's not Confederate statues. This is just going across the board and it needs to stop. It is dividing the country. And I am very much for leaving that statue right where it is, as with all the statues. And, uh, I appreciate the time to speak and that's all I have.
Thank you. Up next, we'll be going to Janet Whitehorn. We'll go to Janet Whitehorn here in a moment. Uh, I wanted to take a moment to say where we are as far as the number of speakers. We have had a lot of people, uh, registered for tonight. Uh, it looks like we have about eight more speakers that are signed up to speak. If I have overlooked anyone, because we have had a giant list here. Um, I do encourage you also to raise your hand using the GoToWebinar tool to raise your hand just in case I may have overlooked you. Up next, we will go into Janet Whitehorn and then we'll go to Key Colbert. Janet Whitehorn, are you there? You are unmuted, but not don't appear to be available to speak. Janet, are you there? All right, not hearing Janet. We're gonna move forward to Key Colbert and then after that will be La Rosalum Williams. So Key and then La Rosalum Williams. Key, are you there?
I am. Good afternoon, council. Um, Mr. Mayor and members of, uh, the Longview community. My name is Karius Colbert. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Snotty, um, and Chelsea for being champions of this matter. I would also like to thank you all for speaking up and advocating for all community citizens, which I can't say, um, has been done so accurately reflected at the county level. Obviously, there is not going to be an action taken, uh, this evening. But I think it's important to have these types of dialogues because it not only reflects, the statue is symbolic of so much more than just the hatred and vitriol that African Americans experienced throughout the 400 years of slavery and the hundreds, the century of Jim Crow and the issues that we still experience in this country today. Let's say Black Lives, the reason why we are yelling Black Lives Matter. The statue is symbolic of, of so much more inequality of, uh, that, you know, stems from the racial divide that Highway 80 shows of the difference of, of criminal justice, of housing, of air, of, of so much inequality that is, is prevalent throughout our beloved Longview. Longview has not been a Longview for all, although our mayor often states one Longview. It is two Longviews depending on your race and your demographic or your zip code in that community. This evening, we see a statue, but the statue represents, as I stated, so much more for people who are standing up and from, not even from Longview, um, and have no history there, have paid no taxes there. I grew up in Longview, Texas. I love Longview, Texas, but I understand that Longview, Texas is not a place and has not been a place for all. That statue has not represented justice for all. When people walk in that courtroom, their courthouse, they understand that that justice, which is supposed to be for all, that we, we swear to by our constitutions, that our lawyers go in to defend, they, to, to uphold, is not represented in that statue. That statue represents the past. That past should be moved to the appropriate place, which is a museum or in, in some cases a park. Having lived in Eastern Europe, I understand where these histories stay. There's a, a Memento Park in Budapest, Hungary. And I was able to go to that Memento Park where communists, where there were actual communists, and I had stated earlier, communists who are, who were celebrated and honored. And that's where those things are placed, where Marx and Engels and others, where those dictators are. I understand that that man was not a communist, but to me, he represents everything that was our past and is not against the, um, the progressive future of Longview. I would like it to be moved. I support, uh, Councilwoman Snotty. Thank you, Chelsea, for, for your efforts.
Thank you. Up next, we'll go to La Rosalum Williams. After that will be Tammy Porter. La Rosalum Williams and then Tammy Porter. Rosalum, uh, looks like she just logged off, so we missed her there. Tammy Porter, who will go to next. Tammy, are you there? Tammy, are you there? Okay, looks like she is not attentive at the moment. Uh, we will try to move on to the next. Here we are getting close to the end of our speakers. Uh, Adrian Dunham. Adrian Dunham is, uh, who will go to next. And then after that, we will try Sharon Marshall. Adrian, are you there? Looks like you are self muted at the moment. Adrian, are you there? Not hearing Adrian, we'll move forward to Sharon Marshall. Sharon Marshall will be next. And after that, uh, we will try Caleb Warren. Sharon Marshall, are you there? You are self muted currently, Sharon. Are you there? Not hearing Sharon, we will move forward.
I'm here. I'm just listening, uh, to the other speakers. I was muted just to listen to everybody, but I do want to say it's time for progress and removing the statue and putting it, putting it somewhere where they can enjoy it. The people that want to salute it or whatever, however they feel about it, that's fine and good. Nobody's telling you not to support your history, but I just wish our town was a little bit more progressive. That's all. I've been a business owner here for 20 years. I've been here since I was 16. I've been here since I was 16, raised in California. So it was, I was raised progressive, so just, let's just move forward. Living in the past is not going to help that poor statue. My, my, honestly, the bird needed a place to, never mind, I'm going to leave that alone. But it's time for it to go. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Sharon, if you would, please state your name and address.
Sharon Marshall, 613 Dobbs Street, Longview, Texas.
Thank you very much. Up next, we're going to try Caleb Borans. Caleb Borans, and after that Ricky Devance. And that would be our last speaker that I see. If there's anyone after that, uh, please raise your hand if I missed you. If not, that will be the end of our speaking time. Caleb Borans, are you there? You're unmuted. Are you there? All right, not hearing from Caleb, we'll move to Ricky Devance. Ricky Devance, are you there? You are self-muted at the moment. Ricky, are you there? Right, not hearing from Ricky. Uh, I don't see any other hands raised. And with that, I believe, Mayor, we are at the end of our citizen comment.
Thank you, Sean. Um, we will now move to our discussion item, which is the Gregg County Confederate Monument. This discussion item was requested by District Chair Councilwoman Nonna Snotty and District Four Councilwoman Kristin Ishihara. Dunham, would you like to start us off?
Nona, you look to be muted.
Okay, I'm here now. Thank you all, um, to all the citizens who made comments tonight. Um, good evening, Mayor Matt, City Councilman Mr. Burns. Thank you for the opportunity and time to discuss the Confederate monument on the Gregg County Courthouse lawn. Now, as elected officials, I think that we have a responsibility to lead and be an example. In light of the social injustices and inequalities happening in the world today, I thought it imperative that the council be amongst the first to have this very difficult and sensitive conversation regarding the Confederate monument. Now, cities across the country have began to evaluate practices and barriers that have perpetuated division. Before we open the discussion, let's be clear about what the Confederacy stood for. Now, there was a gentleman who read it earlier, but I'd like to repeat it. Let's go directly to the words of the Confederacy Vice President Alexander Stevenson. In his cornerstone speech on March 21st, 1861, he stated, "The Constitution rested upon the equality of races." This was an error. Our new government is founded upon exactly the opposite idea. Its foundations are laid, its cornerstone rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery, subordination to superior races is, is natural and normal condition. This, our new government, is the first in the history of the world based upon this great physical, philosophical, and moral truth. Now, today is August 20th, 2020. The character of our city is on the line and people want to hear from their elected officials. Now, I hope and pray that my fellow council members aren't as solid when it comes to standing up for communities and people who look like me. Since the beginning of conversation requesting the removal of the monument, the people involved have been a very diverse group and a true representation of who we are and who we should be as a city. Now, I do understand that there may be consequences regarding us having this conversation. I've already started to experience them. However, we are elected and expected to do what's right. This is a humanitarian issue. With that being said, I will now just open the floor for discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Snotty, are you, have you completed your discussion?
I have. I mean, though, I'm wondering if any of the other council would like to make comments on this subject.
Anyone else like to speak on this subject?
This is Kristen. Do you have a comment? Uh, Ray, go ahead.
Go ahead, Kristen.
Uh, well, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, first, there is no confusion at all that this is under the jurisdiction of Gregg County. Um, and it's absolutely theirs. It's their decision to make. Uh, we respect their authority and we respect their decision. Uh, we have always, as the city of Longview, enjoyed a very valuable relationship with Judge Stout and the county commissioners. Uh, we support them, they support us, and in no way is this intended to impact that relationship. I do believe that the intent of having this on the agenda is to have a, as one speaker referred to, a conversation with compassion. I believe that's a valuable conversation to have. The reality is, is that the monument is a topic regardless of, of your feelings about it, for or against. The reality is that the monument is a topic currently being discussed by many Longview residents, some that contact us, some that don't, but by many Longview residents. And, uh, unfortunately tonight, by a number, large number of non-Longview residents that decided to comment on our discussion. I think it is important that residents of Longview hear from the city council, that we care about the issues that matter to them. So I hope that if there is a message received tonight, it is that our council is now and always open to having a conversation of compassion and that we care about issues that the residents of Longview care about, whether they come under our jurisdiction or not. I want to thank Nona and I want to thank all of the Longview residents that made comments tonight, that did take the opportunity to continue the conversation of compassion. Um, it is a difficult topic and is often met with divisive comments. Um, and I appreciate those that have made an effort to bring it up for discussion and continue that conversation, which is a really important one. So thank you, Nona, and those are all the comments that I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wade, did you want to speak, sir?
Yes. First off, Mayor, to council members, District Two Councilwoman Nona Snotty, District Four Councilwoman Kristin Ishihara, for bringing this to our council tonight for discussion. All the citizens of Longview that have spoken. I am Councilman Ray Wade from District Three. I represent the district in which that statue stands, and I wanted to be known that I stand against anything that brings us apart as a community. This has been a divisive topic. I stand with those on the removal of this statue because we, as council members, we as citizens, should work towards a united Longview. Nothing that stands out to divide us as a community and ultimately as a state and as a nation should not be there to represent that. There's a brutal representation of that, that we should acknowledge as a council, and I stand with those that wish to fight against things that do and often divide us. With that being said, I, uh, return back to the council. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, this is Dave Wright. I'd like to say a few words.
Yes, sir.
Um, my wife has lived in Longview her entire life. I've been here for about 22 years. And fortunately for me, my kids and my grandkids all still live in Longview. Uh, and because of that, I think it is important and the best thing for Longview, that Longview is one Longview. It's not North Longview, it's not South Longview. Longview can never be as great as it can be until it's just one Longview. And I think we've done, I think the people of Longview have spoken to that. We had a bond election a couple of years ago, we, for $104 million. That money wasn't concentrated in one area of the city, it was spread across the city. And, uh, I think the people of Longview are saying, we want a lot, we want Longview to be one for everybody. So what I'm hoping is that for my kids, for my grandkids, we don't let a statue come between the people of Longview. Uh, it sounded to me like tonight, a lot of the speakers that, I don't know if they would divide the city, but a lot of those speakers were not from Longview. I think the majority of the speakers from Longview are very much in favor of pulling Longview together and making it one city and one person, one people. So I just hope we do not let a statue come between us, that we become one Longview. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anyone else would like to speak on this?
Mayor Ed Moore. Um, obviously this is an emotional issue for many members of the community, but we, we are a community. And as Dave said, we strive to be one community. I, I think this is a dialogue that's worthwhile to continue, to continue a dialogue with open hearts and praying on this issue going forward. And I, I support the idea that, that the dialogue can be out in the open and I appreciate Councilwoman Snotty for bringing it before us. And I look forward to additional discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Ms. Nona, are you, are you done?
Um, yes, Mayor. Uh, I, I am. I would just like to, to conclude this discussion with saying, you know, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. So as everybody has said, we need to move forward with open heart and compassionate conversation around this matter.
Thank you so much. And I'll, I'll go ahead. Who was, who was that?
No, it was me. I was saying, thank you.
Oh, oh, thank you. And, and council, now that we're bringing this discussion to a close, this has been a long discussion and I appreciate the opinions of those that were put forth. And I, and I do, I do want us to recognize that, you know, we, we can have discussions. We can discuss anything that we want to. We can discuss race, injustice, prejudice, anything that we want to do that can change our community, to make it a better community. And I, I'd love to see these conversations take place in the appropriate fashion. I do want to make sure that everyone does understand that this, um, this council does not have the jurisdiction or the authority to change this, uh, vote by the commissioners. It's not our job to do that. Uh, our job is to bring forth the voices of our constituents that we work for. Um, and I've had many, many constituents share their opinions with me on this matter. Uh, I've taken their opinions of elected county commissioners who represent the incorporated city of Longview, those being Commissioners Ryan McKinnon, Commissioner Dara Primo, and I've also shared these constituents' opinions with Gregg County Judge Bill Stout. Uh, and I shared my personal opinion with my county commissioner, Ronnie McKinnon, because that's the appropriate avenue to express your, uh, position on this item because they're the ones that were voting on this and it's not us as a city council that will vote on this issue. Um, we don't have authority to legislate voter, change this decision. These are, these are decisions the county will make because there are multiple levels of government in our society. We have federal, state, county, and local. Each of them have their own parameters and their own boundaries. We don't have the ability to change a county, state, or federal decision within these chambers that we preside in right now. But remember that we are, um, a, a county of nine cities and we are just one of those cities of those nine. You know, throughout this whole pandemic, I've spent countless hours as, as, and my team has as well, trying to communicate this, communicate this is the Longview, the role of government. And I have, I've had to explain how, uh, orders issued by the federal government, state government, county government, city level, all interact. You know, we've had, um, issues, uh, from Governor Abbott on the state level that had to be enforced at a city level. It becomes very confusing. So I just want to be clear that this is not a decision of the Longview City Council, this decision of the county commissioners and the, and the court of Gregg County. I want to make sure we do our best to, uh, bring things before our voters, uh, in this, in this chamber, that, that we can, we can make changes on. We can have, A, the authority to vote on, the jurisdiction to vote on, and the ability to make a lasting change. I think that's very important for us to be able to do that. But I would never want us to think we couldn't discuss things, um, in an open forum, but we just need to make those discussions pertinent to our community and our, and our constituents. And I think that's what, uh, what we have to do. Um, I, so our purpose is not to discuss whether or not to remove the monument, whether it should stay or go, because that's the county's decision. But my concern in this whole discussion is what this is doing to our community and the, the divide it's making among our citizens, amongst our citizens. That's what concerns me the most because we are a citizen, we are a city of citizens where I think we love each other. I think we have a wonderful community and, you know, you all can poke fun at my one, one Longview slogan all you want to, but if you don't start there, where are you going to start? You know, I, it doesn't bother me that you poke fun at it because I believe it. I believe it's one Longview. I grew up here. My whole life was spent in this community. There was no Highway 80 divide when I grew up. So it is one Longview, it'll always be one Longview to me, and I want to continue to try to do everything I can to make it one Longview because I think that's the most important thing that we do is, is to do that. Um, I don't want to see our community divided and avoiding areas of our town, or more importantly, avoiding each other. Um, because that would, that would divide us even further. And I, and I've heard over and over again, people say that when you don't speak, your silence speaks for you. Well, a really, really wise man once said, preach the gospel every day and when absolutely necessary, use words. So, you know, I think we should live our lives and, and be, be, be evident in our actions of how we live and what we stand for. Uh, that's what I always try to do and always try to teach my children to do because talk is easy. It's, it's what you do and how you do it that makes the difference. Let's remember one thing, because we might disagree on something on any issue, it doesn't mean either side are bad people. We are all entitled to our opinions, but we must be respectful of our fellow man. So there's going to be two sides of this issue and every other issue that comes before us as a city council. Let's learn to be respectful. Let's learn to dialogue. Let's learn to listen to our constituents, bring it forth to the appropriate people, and let's make decisions and we'll move forward because I want to see Longview be that one Longview. That's what we need to be and that's what my goal is, is the mayor of this town. So I do appreciate you all and thank you for the indulgence. This has been a long, uh, discussion, but it was an important one to have to have. So I thank you for your, your time and your efforts. We're in advocate consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to discuss, uh, a pull-up for separate discussion?
This is Kristen. Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Nonna Snotty, District Two, second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, I will have a roll call vote. Please say yes or no. District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. City Secretaries, please confirm the votes.
Yes, sir. Motion was made by Councilmember Kristin Ishihara, was seconded by Nonna Snotty. Consent agenda passes seven zero.
Thank you. Move on to our budget item. Consider an ordinance to adopt the 2020 tax rate and levying set rate. Uh, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you and good evening. This is the final vote to set the FY 2021 property tax rate. The rate to be approved is 15.92 cents for debt service, 39.97 cents for maintenance and operations totaling 55.89 cents. This item has special language for the motion to approve, and I can answer any questions you might have at this time.
Does anyone have any questions of staff at this time?
Mayor Ed Moore?
Yes.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 55.89 cents per $100 of valuation, which is effectively a 1.33% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
This is Kristen, second.
If a motion and a second will now conduct a roll call vote. District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. City Secretary, please confirm the record of the vote.
Yes, sir. Special motion was made by Councilmember Ed Moore, was seconded by Kristin Ishihara. Uh, motion passes seven zero.
Counsel, that concludes our budget, uh, discussion for the year. I appreciate your all's, uh, input. I know that it took a lot of time and effort on city staff's part. This is a very challenging budget to, um, to put together because of the difficulties we faced through the last few months in our sales tax revenues. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that we will move forward and we will provide the services we need for the community and do so with the most appropriate way we can with the funds available to us. So I thank you for your indulgence and city staff for all the time and effort you all put in there. Uh, it's been a long process, but I thank you very much. We'll now move to our action item. Consider resolution adopt the Longview Economic Development Corporation's 2021 budget. Um, Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you all today, uh, quickly going through the budget. Uh, well, first off, I'd like to thank, uh, our treasurer on our board, David Cooley, uh, especially- First off, I'd like to thank our treasurer on our board, David Cooley, especially our former treasurer, Natalie Lynch. They were indispensable in working with me and crafting this budget, as you mentioned, Mayor, a very difficult situation. Just a quick snapshot, year in review, and of course, it's been a bizarre time. But during this time, we actually generated more proposals this year than last year. I believe last year, we were at number 16. We were in full momentum mode prior to COVID. We actually had more site visits prior to COVID than last year. And we're still working on projects. It's interesting to note that even during COVID, our economic activity has increased pretty significantly in the past couple of months. Projects that were put on hold prior to April are now coming back to life, and we're seeing new projects, even retail projects, that are springing to life. We're excited about what, what the future holds here coming down the line. Again, this is just a graphic representation to show you historically, since this past beginning of the fiscal year, what our number of responses for RFIs and the number of site visits. There you see the representation, how it's beginning to increase in July, and we've, we've had even more here since August 1st. So, we will see that activity continue to increase, let's hope. Moving on to the budget, you'll see last year, our sales tax revenue projected at 6.148. This year, projected, thank you, Angela, working with you and Keith, projected at 5.692. That's a decrease of 456,000, but we have done some things to, within our budget this year, that I'll point out, that help offset that, but still allow us to continue work that we need to get done, even without dipping into any of our reserve fund. Just briefly going over a program of work, you will see there, our industry programs have decreased, primarily that is from marketing and travel. Our travel has decreased significantly, as you can well imagine. Don't anticipate much activity there picking up until probably closer to the end of the year. And then our marketing efforts, a lot of the costs associated with that is associated with the travel to the trade shows that we attend, the conferences that we attend. But we're keeping everything else the same in terms of the retail development talent, which involves the Work Keys Program primarily. You'll see the 300,000 that we normally allocate for projects, that is for the city's transit system, that helps offset the $400,000. So thank you, Keith. That will be supplemented by the CARES Fund money. So that takes a big shot at bringing our budget back into a realistic realm. Here are GNA, personnel and benefits. The only increase is the $4,400. That is strictly an increase in the insurance, and thank you, Mary Ann, that came from you and working with your group. There is no increase for pay raises. Office expenses, insurance, which is our liability, property insurance and such, stays the same. Professional services, which includes our accounting, auditing, and legal work, all stays the same. These are just some of the incentive programs that we have on the coming year. Aon Coil, ATCO, Indevco, Total Card, all of these companies have met their goals. Well, Aon actually starts up this year, but they are still moving forward and working feverishly to complete their project. And as you know, we recently approved an expansion project for Keep Right. So we hope to see this incentive payment list grow, but we're also excited that all of our companies have met their goals for this year. And our business park maintenance, again, stays the same. That's taking care of our north business park and our Longview business park. Debt service, that is the bond payments that we've issued, had the bond issued for the trails for a little over four years ago. And then our non-fixed assets, our office FFNE will stay the same. Real property, site plan development, that will stay the same. That is where we perform site plans, site improvement, and so forth. There you see our scheduled incentive payments of 490,000, and then our payments to the manufacturing academy. So our economic development allocations pretty much are the same, just a little bit less than last year, but are pretty, pretty much the same. So therefore, we've got the money to carry out our budget, our operation of the budget, and we still have ample funds to fund new projects for the coming year. Now moving into the capitals fund budget, you'll notice at the top, the revenue share and the interest income. The revenue share was a program we had with a company that's now called Conterra, where we paid them some money to extend the fiber optics to the Longview Business Park and to the airport, and they reimbursed us on the pro rata share. That program actually expired September last year. The interest income is, will be exhausted, because that was income we were drawing from bond proceeds that we had in a separate account. The bond proceeds will be exhausted by the end of, probably by the end of this fiscal year, certainly by the end of the upcoming. And then we will move into the LECO funds, which you'll see, the 1.784. That number came from, came from Rollin on his estimates for the upcoming fiscal year, and that should build out the trails program, I guess barring any inclement weather or such. George Ricci Signal, that was a project completed this year that was in association with the Dollar General project. It's the signal there with Galaxy and George Ricci. The new office headquarters, nothing's changed there. That is the $2 million that was approved by LECO Board and City Council last year. We're just merely carrying that forward through this year. To give you a quick update on that, we did do, performed a land swap with Longview ISD, where we conveyed property to them in the north business park. They in turn conveyed the property on Whaley and Second Street to us, so there, it was, no property was removed from the tax rolls. There was no cost. I think LSD had a small fee for the closing cost. We are in the middle of plan development with our architect, so that project continues to move forward. Other potential capital projects, that's to be determined as we move forward, such as we're working with the developer on Estes. And recently, well, past couple of months ago, we engaged an engineer to design plans for text approval for a median cut to gain access into the site. That's what those funds are for. As you'll see, there are no transfers in from the general fund, no transfers out, and that fund balances out. Again, we're not going into our reserves. Our reserves remain healthy at just over $12 million, and we still have ample money within this budget to carry out our program of work. Here are the trails funding, again, working with Rollin for this past fiscal year, and as we move forward, there's the 1.8, or 1.78 figure, and then the tax stock grant, hopefully will get this process completed in the next fiscal year. And that's all I have to add at this point, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments to Mr. Mansfield? Ms. Snotty will entertain a motion.
Ed Moore moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. I'll conduct a roll call vote. District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Mr. Secretary, confirm the record of the vote.
Yes, sir. Motion was made by Councilmember Ed Moore, was seconded by Dave Wright. Resolution passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield, for your presentation. We appreciate all that you've been doing for our community to move us forward and keep us in the economic development world. Keep doing what you're doing, and bring us some more businesses and jobs, my friend.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everyone.
Thank you. We will now go to our COVID-19 update. We continue to see cases in the community. We had 14 new cases today. Our cases are, I hate to, I don't like to use the word "level off," but we're not in the 30s and 40s and 50s and 60s as we were a few weeks ago. We're at 1,336 cases at this point in Longview. Our recoveries are on the increase, which is good. We're up to 604 recoveries. We had 50 on Tuesday, we had 93 last Saturday. So those are coming up, because I think it's becoming easier to identify recoveries the way the CDC has identified recoveries, instead of taking, having to do another test. It's a different method, which is giving us more ability to capture more recoveries, which is always good news. But the most important statistics are hospitalizations, and we seem to be holding our own, or even coming down a little bit on that. That's the most important statistic that we have. And we know that as school has started, we're going to see some increased cases, and schools are going to have to deal with this, and we understand that. But fortunately, the kids aren't affected as severely by this disease, and they seem to recover quite well and do well, and their transmission is not as evident as adults are. So, we're still learning everything we can to know about this disease. We don't know exactly all there is to know, and I don't know that we ever will, at least for some period of time. But we do know for now that masks work, hand washing works, social distancing works. So if we continue to do those things in our community, we will continue to lessen the spread of this virus, and hopefully we will be back to normal as soon as possible. That's the most important thing, is getting back to normal and getting our businesses back running, and our community going, and our taxes going, and all the things that we need to do to have a healthy, solid town. So, on the COVID update, that's where we are. On everything else, I just appreciate council, and I appreciate our citizens, and I appreciate the time it takes to sometimes conduct city business. But thank you for your indulgence, and let's remember one thing, gang, let's all just love each other, because that's what we're here for. So until next time, we're adjourned.